The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you everyone for attending tonight for the January 19th, 2016 Bryan City Council meeting. Also, I want to thank folks here in the chamber and also, I know there's quite a few folks, I've been talking to them, that they watch it on TV on BMU, so I appreciate their attendance on the TV and their concern for the city and keeping updated on what's going on in the city. So, thanks to everyone. First, council, you've been approved, you've been provided with minutes from the January 4th, 2016 meeting. If you have any questions, any additions or corrections that need to be made, if not, I would ask for approval.
I'll make a motion, pass the minutes.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Riccope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, and Lori, would you give us the clerk treasurer's report?
The council was presented with the clerk treasurer's report for the month ending December 31st, 2015.
Okay, any comments in regards to the treasurer's report?
I move that we accept it.
I'll second.
Riccope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is hearing of public concern, and that's for anyone who would
like to address council at this time that is not on the agenda, and I see no one, so we will go on to number four, which is an ordinance. And Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number one, 2016, an ordinance providing for the apportionment of investment income for the city of Bryan and repealing ordinance number 49, 2008, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance to allocate the interest investment that we have for the city. The reason we're proposing one, to repeal an ordinance from 2008, is because Fund Number 229, which was the micro loan fund, has been absorbed into the 208 revolving loan fund. So with that in mind, we have to redistribute the interest accordingly.
Okay.
I move we adopt this ordinance?
Suspend.
Suspend. I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move that we approve?
Second.
Uh-oh, I didn't, okay.
Rick?
I didn't.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Number five is also an ordinance, and Lori, would you please number and read that?
Ordinance number two, 2016, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the fire department fund for fire escrow cleanup of $5,400. There was a fire at 324 North Williams Street on December 3rd, and by Ohio Revised Code, we retained escrow, and we would like to release that money.
This ordinance two, throughout the year, maybe 12, 13, 14 times, will increase the amount that we originally budgeted when the money's come in. We have to do that. So here's a, here's the first amount of money that came in from that fire that we didn't have when we made the budget.
I believe we suspend. I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
All right, number six is also, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I move. I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Next, number six is also an ordinance, and so Lori, would you please number and read that?
Ordinance number three, 2016, an ordinance to amend section 929.03 of for residential and commercial and industrial sewer charges within the city and to amend 929.05 for residential, commercial, and industrial sewer charges outside the city by adding a surcharge to all accounts for bills written on or after March 20th, 2016, for the implementation of plant improvements and maintenance.
Okay, I'll begin this discussion, and then we'll ask Rick Olmeyer, our plant supervisor, to come up and give some more thorough explanation of what we plan to do. This started with the prior council, we've been studying this for some time, improvements that are needed at the wastewater plant. We had some executive sessions on this with Arcadis, giving us some ideas, and we looked at all the ideas, and now we've come across with a rate increase tonight. Why the increase, as I say, it was a result of the Arcadis study of 2014, and in that study, they took a look at our digesters, they had to tear those digesters apart, and spread the content so far over the fields, and it was delayed because of weather last year, so we just got the final report just before Christmas of the digesters. It also involves our EPA permit, which we've been able to push back to 1-1 of '17, but we have some things that we have to do in that permit in order to get approval by 1-1 of '17. What they found out, that in the digesters repairs, there's three of them, and they need repairs, and there were a price set for that that they think will come in for bid by Arcadis. The grit removal system needs to be updated. I think Rick has mentioned, we have over maybe 50, 60 mile of sewers that run into that, and with the equalization basin, water is running through that pipe a lot quicker than it used to be, and it's bringing some grit in, and we don't want grit to get into the plant itself and hold us up big time. So the grit removal system is going to be updated, and also then, in the study, we've been looking at switching from, at fluid disinfection from chlorine to ultraviolet, and it was determined by Arcadis that this is a cheaper way and a safer way for our workers to do that. And they kind of estimated the cost of all these three projects to be around $2.5 million and, in that account. We've already put $300,000 out of the half percent in our budgeted money to do a request for, I guess, we've already had that, qualifications, request for qualifications is already in. And then we, Dick Reed, a former councilman, was able to look at our rate structure, and we looked at a seven-year versus a 10-year plan, and it was determined that we could get all these things done in a cheaper way on a seven-year, doing them all roughly at a, maybe a 3% interest. We don't know if that's going to come in, that or not. Rick can go over some of the things that we've been doing out of the 506 fund, we have made some repairs out of the 506 fund, which is the, due to the rates that we already have, but that's $106,000 we've, you had in projects we just did last year from screw pump gates and so forth, you can maybe hit on that, Rick. And then, so we decided then to come up tonight to propose a rate increase, and I contacted some of our big users, and I also looked at our rate increase, what that would do, and Lori hit it right on the head, so to speak, for a seven-year plan with a $7.50 increase, it's going to bring in around $2,930. So with the $2,500,000 and with the budgeted increase we have for interest rates and so forth, we're going to hit that pretty close, providing our rates come in like we said. And I think the council looked at all the repairs, and they said, we better go with the 750 and cover our costs and do it now, so we don't get into any problem. I also looked at some of our prior rate increases and what we have done, and on the wastewater plant in 205 to 215, we took $2.5 million out of the half percent, that was a 3.7 million project, we financed that over 10 years at eight tenths percent, 1.2 million, we were able to pay that off early, we paid it in full, 12/31 of 2012. That was a great savings for us, we got that done. We also then had a $1 million cost for the equalization plan, which we put in, we, that was a $1 million cost, we took 250 again from the half percent, and that was $750,000 we financed over 10 years, 2.86, and we still owe $500,000 approximately on that, and we're making payments. Problem with the half percent using that money is that that has been drained, the first half percent was for, past 86, I believe, was for the wastewater alone, the second one, it was renewed nine and a half years later, was for, we added street and sewer and wastewater plant. The third year, it was renewed, it was for street, sewer, wastewater, and to build a new police and fire station, and now we're at the point where that will go, we just renewed that, and that will go another nine and a half years. The problem with the half percent is, that's getting hit with all the rate decreases that we're getting from the state, we don't have near the money we're coming in, and also in that half percent, when you talk street and sewers and asphalt prices have doubled in the period of time and so forth, so there's a, there's a big difference now in what we spent. I can go back when I started to be mayor in 2001, 2002, our wastewater rate was $4.88. We, we held that like that, and then we raised it to 610 in 2003, and we held that for seven years, and we still did projects at the wastewater plant, but we were at 610 for seven years. Then 2010, 11, and 12, we went to $10 for our rate increase, and in 13, 14, and 15, we're at $13 right now, and we're proposing a 750 increase tonight. So, Rick, that's where we're at, I'll, I'll bring you up and go over some of these projects that we're, look to do and why we're doing it now.
Mayor, you've covered things pretty good, but I can go into some details about the projects. Like you said, we had a special meeting at the wastewater plant in June of 2014, when we kind of went over the plan that we would attack these with. Number one, the digesters, to survey the condition, because they are pretty much the last of the major processes out there that we haven't addressed. We've addressed the primary clarification, the secondary clarifiers, and the fitner tanks, the screw pumps, and all of this stuff was new in the mid-'80s, and for a long time, we didn't have a lot of maintenance costs, it was still new equipment, well, obviously it's not new anymore, so, like, any kind of equipment, especially at a wastewater plant where the environment's tough, it's not going to last forever. So the digesters is the number one project, and that one, we, like the mayor said, we had to drain that, clean it, and we, we use Arcadis, an engineering firm from Toledo, that was formerly Finkbinder, I think the city has a long history with them, and I think they do good work. They suggested that we use this, World Testing International, it's a company that actually specializes in doing surveys and, in something like that. Number two is disinfection, because of the new permit and the new standards, we aren't able to do what we can with what we had. Number three is grit. Okay, so I'm going to go into detail a little bit about the first one. The digester, what it is, is a metal, is a concrete tank with a floating cover, and think of it like a ship's hull, something metal. The contents of that is the settled material in wastewater that we call sludge, it's the solids. And those digesters, there was, the oldest one was built in 1940, there's one that was built in the '60s, and the newest was in the mid-'80s, so to give you an idea of the age of these. There's been alterations and things changed over that time, but all three of them, those lids were built in the 1980s, and it is, it's, it's a metal thing that's coated and painted, and you can't easily look at the condition of them and say what it is, so it required a pretty big project to remove the contents, clean it, and assess them. This company assessed them, and what they came up with was a study that all of you were presented with, its bottom line is, they're in condition that they can be rehabbed, not replaced, and, but we need to get on with it, and but if we go forward with this, it'd probably be 2017 that the actual work would be done. The second, disinfection, the mayor said, because our new permit, the standards are different, we can't meet them with what we had, and we did a actual study, we increased the feed rates, we've done things, and we aren't going to be able to meet our permit. In other words, we'd be in violation if we don't. We did hire Arcadis to do a study and to compare prices and the function, and what they came up with proves, shows that UV disinfection is a way to go with it. If we were able to just change the equipment in our existing system, which is chlorine and sulfur dioxide, we would have done that, but as they do the calculations, the tankage isn't big enough. And then, the tank that we are actually using now is one from the 1940s plant that was converted to a chlorine contact tank. So, that, and that project alone, the price is like $945,000 to do that. Previous one was 1.35 million for the digesters, so here we are. And the third and final one is grit removal. It basically is something at the head of the plant, like the mayor said, to protect the downstream processes. That equipment also was put in in the mid-'80s, and it failed five years ago. We, going through the plant, we weren't seeing a lot of indication that we had a grit problem, and there's some newer plants, probably with newer sewer systems, that are built, they don't always use grit removal, sometimes it's not used. Well, I was really thinking, we were probably going to get by without it until after the spring, that big flush we had, like the mayor said, that the sewers, because of the, the SSO basin we have, it makes a quick trip out to the treatment plant now, and it scoured, I believe, the sewers and left us some pretty heavy grit deposits, and what I would suggest is, we're still, the engineers are still looking at it, but if we replace that in kind, they're talking like $530,000. I would say in kind, other than the fact that the part that failed, we would build it out of stainless steel. If they were to go a different direction, because of the way it's built, we could end up with over a million dollars in a grit removal system, but we're thinking real strongly that we should be able to go back to replacing it in kind with what we have. The other thing, the permit to install for the disinfection is that due at the end of this year, and we've already got a modification to move that back, anticipating these projects. And the EPA, they actually work with us pretty good, and I think Phil Anderson from Arcadis said this, the EPA likes to see you maintaining your equipment and keeping your plan up. I realize it's a burden on people to pay for that, but it's just like everything else, you have to pay to maintain it. And I've been there several years, and I've been in the superintendent for 10, and I don't, personally, I don't think we're spending any money we don't have to spend, we do what we have to do to make it do what it's got to do. And I think, really, in the last 10 years, we repaired quite a few things and replaced things. It's a lot easier to do in this environment, looking ahead, than after something, have a severe breakdown, anything can happen, and we don't want to start having trouble meeting our permit. That, to me, is the important things.
I might, I might say also that people can go online, and Rick pointed this out, the 2013 sewer and water rate survey, and they have all the towns in there, and the, the annual residential sewer rate for 2013 is 606, $606, and that is based on a usage rate of 7,756 gallons, it's a standard rate across the board. Bryan fell in 2013 at 268, and by the change with our rate, we'll be at 358, and I say the average, 2013 is 606, we're way beyond, way under the average of what other people are doing for their sewer rate. So that doesn't make it any better or any worse, but we, we're not, we're, we're staying in the ballgame, we're making the repairs, and trying to do the best we can to not get EPA violations, which would, you take the water situation in the, the one town, and EPA's come down pretty hard on people for not making the moves they need to make. So it's very important that we keep that plan up, and we, we built a new fire station for, you, $5 million, which we financed, you can see the new police and fire station. The big thing at a wastewater plant, the problem is, people don't see that when they go by, it's all underground or in the ground and so forth, but you've got to keep that up just as well as you would any other building. And it looks like every, about every three years, it goes up about a buck and a half to keep maintaining that. And, and they're mentioning barium now is another problem that's coming down the line. It's, it's, it's not going to go away, every year you're going to have something new that's going to come up, and EPA is going to find something along that line. So you try to work with your people, and you work with industry to make these improvements with, make the city better. Well, thanks, Rick. Thank you. Okay. Number seven, we have another ordinance, so Lori, would you?
We need to make a motion to approve the first reading on this ordinance.
Thank you.
Can I make that motion?
Why don't you go ahead, you're ready.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Riccope?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Sorry, you. Now, with that being said, it's for $7.50 increase, and if you look at the, at the chart, the number of units, for a 5 eighths meter, a three quarters, and a one, that's one service unit, you take $7.50 times one, add it to $13, and that's where they get to 2050. So for a pipe, 5 eighths, three quarters, and a one, they're all paying the 750, the 750, 750. Go to the 1.5, you take three times 750, and add that on to $39, and that gives you your rate increase. So in case there's any problems over that chart, that's how that is, is figured, and that's how that is read. So multiply all those times, we don't have anyone with an eight-inch size meter, I don't even know why that's in there, but we don't have anyone with an eight.
Just in case.
Just in case.
We also have different rates, correct, for people outside the city that are connected to the sewer, so that's something to note, too.
And everybody got the same 750 increase?
They got, theirs was 10.
Outside got 10, that's right. Outside went 10.
Okay.
And you have made some contacts, as you said, with some industries. Yeah, I, I, I talked to the ones, some of the ones that are, that are, well, the big ones, we have one six, I think there's one six, and I talked to that individual. And there was really no problem, and I talked with some of the industries that have the fours, and there was no problem along that line. But we, we want to watch, holding the readings too long, I know it's important we have one reading, but if there's any questions, we really should get that going at the next meeting and get that through, because it is a process to, to get the bidding and everything done on that stuff, to get moving. Any, any questions, council, I had on that. I think we were well educated on the issue. Okay, good, good. All right, now, now number seven, is an ordinance, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number four, 2016, an ordinance accepting the requested annexation of land consisting of 10.051 acres, more or less, in section 22 of last by township, and classifying the same.
Okay, Rhonda, would you mind making a comment on that?
Sure. Back in November of 2015, we came to you with a resolution of services to provide services to two properties that are located out on County Road D, they're currently owned by Eshman, and the other one is owned by James Family, and they are requesting annexation into the city to have services provided to them, and of course, then they will also be responsible for paying income tax. They filed their petition with the Williams County Commissioners, and the annexation was approved by the Commissioners on January 7th. That paperwork then is returned back to the city of Bryan for approval by the city council to accept those properties into the city.
Okay, council, you have any comments?
I, I'll move that we accept this ordinance.
Suspends?
We'll suspend it first, yes.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move that we approve.
I will second that.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, let's see here, number eight, the mayor has an appointment for 2016, mayor. Okay, these are some appointments that I wish to make. First of all, we need someone for council to, to take Dick Reed's position on the BIPEC Committee. The BIPEC is the industrial park committee, and they met probably six or seven or eight times last year with the new industrial park and with the, hopefully, companies coming in and so forth, you will be meeting periodically on this. You never know, usually, we try to contact the members and see if they're available, and these people come in, you never know whether it's 2:00 in the afternoon or 8:00 in the morning, but we call the BIPEC Committee together, and they decide whether that's a good fit for the industrial park or not, and they're making rules and regulations for the industrial park. So I need a council member to replace Dick Reed. Also then, Bryan Economic Growth Council, Matt Davis goes on replacing Diamond. The C3 Design Committee, Dan Yarris is coming on for the chamber, and Mike Sharon is replacing Tom Voight in the development area for the C3 Design. Civil Service, Dave Perkins and Larry Sanders move up to 12/31/21 date, that's joining Dan Struzo, who is currently on that civil service. Momi Valley Planning, I'm replacing Tommy on that one, and Dan Yarris is also already on that from the chamber. They meet once a month at 8:00 in the morning at the Wedco, or no, Momi Valley meets once a month in defiance. Wedco is going to be myself replacing Tommy in that particular area. WETCO is going to be myself replacing Tommy in that particular area. Park Board is Emily Eball, going for a second term. She's already on a one term, goes to 1231 of 18. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Mike Stoller, they keep rotating there, he goes to 1231-21. And the Planning and Zoning, Jerry Mannan, is on to 2021. So I need, I need council's discussion of who wants to be on replacing Dick Reed for Bi-Pac.
I guess, I wouldn't mind serving on that unless, unless somebody else wants to, or whatever you want. How are we gonna do that?
Anyone else want that, or?
I would be interested in it, but I don't know if, you know, this being my second meeting, how everyone else feels about that. It's up to you, Tommy.
I would, no one else, but we got a couple people more interested, so we'll go, we got it narrowed down to two?
Yeah. Fuck the coin. No, really.
Whatever.
It's up to you.
I'll take it.
There you go.
Okay, then, I need a, I guess we need a motion to approve all those committees.
So move.
We have, yeah.
Second?
Keith?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
I'm staying. Okay.
Number nine, we have another resolution, so Lori, would you please, number and read?
Resolution number 2, 2016. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for administration of the revolving loan fund with the State of Ohio Department of Development and declaring it an emergency.
This one is a, a year-to-year thing with the State of Ohio. If you notice in the back, you already have a hearing on the CDVG chip program that's going to be held at the courthouse. And this, this, actually, it's a three-year appointment for this revolving loan fund. And Dennis Miller, this was one that he brought in late for the agenda, and it's important that we get that on, especially since they're starting the hearings for the, our CDVG's chip program, which is for this particular year. So this is a resolution that comes forth about every, every three years to maintain that revolving loan fund with the State of Ohio and the chip program.
I move that we suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Okay, number 10 is employee status change in fire department and Chief Siders.
Good evening. Two of our volunteer firefighters, Derek Allen and Alex Campbell, were recently overlooked on a pay increase that they were due in accordance with the volunteer pay ordinance. With that, I would ask that we rectify that and get them changed to the appropriate pay range that they're due in accordance with the pay ordinance.
So this would be retroactive?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring that up to date.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, okay, do any of these right now before we go around?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have our yearly report presentation on the planning and zoning, and Mr. Andrew Rotterson will be making that report for us, presenting that report.
You all should have received a copy of my report earlier today. This brief overview of what we did permit-wise and zoning certificate-wise at City of Bryan in 2015. Mayor, you wanna start the presentation?
Where do we have that one at now?
Right there.
Is that? Are we getting the lights here? Do I?
Yeah.
Well, not coming up on that one, huh?
This is the wrong one. I'm gonna have to tell you to just slide some air for me, if you would, please.
Okay.
Not very many, we'll, we'll do fine. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. See, out in the graph, 2015, I issued 128 permits. As you can see, it's comparable to the last couple of years, slightly higher than last year. We'll go to the next slide, mayor. From those permits, took in $16,264.63. Again, slightly higher from last year. Mayor, you wanna go ahead and go with the next one? Construction trends over the last six years, as you can see from the graph there, commercial construction costs in the city was significantly higher than last year. Part of the fact was A-stamp, davin, both did pretty good size additions. Health Partners, Tractor Supply, renovation projects, each over 500,000. Latter-day Saints Church out on Town Line, nearly doubled the size of their space. So a lot of, a lot of commercial activity last year. Residential was slightly down, as you can see there from the graph. Reason for that, last year issued seven new home permits, this year only had five. So, seeing this graph, not much duplexes or triplexes going on, it was all just single-family homes, new homes this year. Zoning certificates. 2015, we had 11 zoning certificates, slight increase from previous years. From those certificates, brought in $1,000, if you wanna go to the next one, mayor, which is comparable to years past. As far as zoning certificate categories, we had one preliminary plat approval. That was for the Ridge at Greenfield, second addition. I believe planned, or construction's plan uncertain on that this year, so we'll have, have to approve the final plat this coming year. We had five lot splits. We had two variances, both were used variances. One was for a piece of land out on County Road C that Isaac Property owns. The other used variance was for Isaac Property as well, on South Portland Street. And with that one getting approved for community health professionals to move in there, we rescinded the original used variance out on County Road C. We did have several site development reviews. The Bryan City Schools, the new high school site did that early January. We had the Isaac Property on both Outland Grove and South Portland Street, had the Best One Tire, it's under construction out on North Main. And that was it. The new homes, we had two in Autumn Chase, one in the Ridge in Greenfield, one at the Greystone Condos off of Fieldstone there. And we had the Habitat House on South Beach Street last year. That was all I have, if you have any questions?
Tire 1, was that in, in on this?
That was not in this. I was still waiting from the state, so I can issue the final yet.
Gotcha, yeah.
As far as outlook for this year, I know several businesses are looking, adding on, so looking good, and hopefully, housing industry picks up. I know there's one going on, out in Autumn Chase right now. Still waiting for a personal number on it, so I can issue the permit, but hopefully, with the Ridge at Greenfield going in, we'll see some more houses go up out there.
Tire 1, what kinda date they looking at for that completion? Do you know, Andy?
Originally, they were talking, I believe, March.
Really? Yeah. Uh-huh. Good. Any other questions from council? Okay, good. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, that completes everything on our agenda, so I'll go around the room real quick. And Andrew, do you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay, Chief Willis?
No.
All righty. Rick, anything else? All right, Chief Siders?
No, sir.
All righty. Judy, you have any comments or anything you'd wanna bring up? All right, Carrie?
Um, since I served on this board before, I would like to thank Andy and the Planning and Zoning Commission for their time. Those are volunteer positions, and I think they do a good job in that committee. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Rick?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Keith?
Yes, I, I'd like to comment on our rate increase for our wastewater treatment plant. I really feel that people need to understand that that's something that is very, very valuable to our community, and it's something that goes 24/7, 365, 366 days a year. And we're still doing a wonderful job of keeping it going. And I feel that we're doing a wonderful job at keeping the costs down and keeping the rates down, even with this rate increase, and I hope people are understanding of it. And there's a lot of technicalities about what it is, you gotta be a professional to know. And we up here, we're, we're going on the basis of the studies that were done and all of that, and not that we know it all, but we have to go on the professionals' opinions. And I feel that if you really have questions about it, talk with those professionals. Get a hold of Rick, he would tell, he would explain it to you. I'm talking to the people, our constituents, and I thank you for all the work you've done.
Rick? Hey, Ms. Lori?
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Rodney?
No, sir.
Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple things. Annual report started tonight. Next council meeting, we'll have engineering in parks. And then the next one after that will be street and fire, and then the last one will be wastewater. We'll wind up our annual reports for, for 2015. We wanted to congratulate the St. Pat's group that presented their octobots to us. They're going to Wright State, I think, in a few weeks to compete down there. They finished at the Bowling Green as, as grand champions down there and received some honors, and so those kids have it all together. So we wish them the luck as they go on to state competition at Wright State. Also, I got my annual letter that February is Career and Technical Education Month at Fore County, and invited out there February 5th for lunch with Rick and the, and the kids. I always enjoy that, so it is Career Technical Month, so congratulations on that. So that's really all I have tonight.
Okay, I guess that's it from here, so appreciate it, and everybody, keep warm. Supposed to get a heat wave in the next couple of days, so don't put your bathing suit on yet. All right, thank you very much.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Bang. We're done.